March twenty first, twenty twenty three, we'll open this call to order this strategic planning workshop. I'll take a roll call, or a boat roll call, please.
Jessica Riley here.
Michelle Kirk be here.
And there's Shaybrook here.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Jeffrey.
So we have two consultants from T L A here today. You met Scott last time when he was here and did a presentation. Gary and Zeph have been here all day today, meeting with different groups, met with leadership this morning for a good hour and a half, anyway. And then met with town department heads. CPAC was also part of a meeting today. You folks are the last ones on their list for today. They come back again in April. So they'll be doing meetings with teachers, parents, community members, and then.
Students.
Then, excuse me?
Students.
Students, thank you. And then with the board of selectmen, warrant committee, and town moderator. So it'll be, we'll get a lot of info and lots of information. They've already compiled a ton of data already. So I know that as practice, they'll go through, they'll introduce themselves, and then I will let you guys meet with them. I will go.
All right, thank you very much for bringing that up.
It's me, Buzzy, sorry.
Sorry, can you refer, what are your names again?
I'm Zeph Junetti.
Jeff?
And I'm Zeph with a Z.
Zeph, sorry.
Good, so, here we go.
Oh, okay.
So I'm a retired superintendent from Mansfield. As you started, I told Jeff this morning, my first teaching job was a permanent sub in Medfield at Wheelock in nineteen eighty-two. I made a whopping twenty-five dollars a day, I think.
He's still.
Oh, you got to ask today.
It's a theme, it's a theme, right?
Yeah.
You guys should hang around.
And then I was a teacher in Franklin, music teacher, and then from there, I went into administration. I was in Bridgewater, I was in Waymouth, I was in Norwood. I ended my career in Mansfield. I've gone back and done three building basin from positions since I retired five years ago. And it's my second year with T L A and with Gary as a time, so.
Everybody, I'm Gary Maestas. I, this is my thirty, well, last year was my thirty-fourth year. I taught, I was in the city principal, principal, technology coordinator, city superintendent, superintendent in Plumuth for thirteen years. And then I was interim superintendent in Hingham last year. I, I don't know why I did.
Couldn't say no.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't have, but it was really good, good experience. But I've been working with T L A for about three years, and I've been doing consulting, you know, here and there over the years. But just grateful to be here and looking forward to the conversation we'll have today.
So I assume Scott gave you the overview of the company. We're a nonprofit out of Woburn, and we're on the leadership side. There's a handful of us that do the leadership work, and we do, we're doing eleven strategic plans this year in New England. And we do learning walks, and we do portrait of a graduate work, and we do time restructuring, and we do administrative coaching. So we're pretty busy. So thanks for having us. I want to take you through the process for strategic planning. It's a five-year plan that Medfield is looking at. And our role in this is to guide the district through the work, not have it be our work and our fingerprints on it. It's Medfield's plan, not our plan. So what we're going to do tonight is we're entering phase one, which is the building of the foundation. Phase two will begin once we gather all the data, and that's the work done by the Strategic Planning Committee, which is twenty-two members, I believe, representative of the community. And then the third phase is the implementation of the plan. So today, we started in a process of collecting data. So what do we look at? We look at all the ex post facto data that the district has on everything. The data gets dumped into files for the committee to work with. We are holding all these forums that Jeff mentioned, and the surveys that go up to the constituencies as well. And there's a tremendous amount of data, and the data is really what drives the plan. All of the initiatives that come out of this are grounded in the data. And the more data we get and the more authentic the data we collect, the better informed the strategic plan will be. So that's where we're beginning phase one. Phase two is the building of the plan by the Strategic Planning Committee, typically five meetings. And there's a sixth meeting that is data crunching meeting, looking at all the, all the phase one data, and then that is analyzed. And then, once we begin our meetings, we look at the existing mission, which is what is the work, what does the district do? What is your mission? And then what are the core values? Typically, mission and core values are rewritten with the beginning of a new strategic plan. And then, once those are established, we then look at your vision. Where do you want to be in five years? What is that lofty goal you hope to achieve? And from that, develop strategic objectives, strategic initiatives, and the outcomes. And then the theory of action is the implementation of the plan. What are the timelines? Who's responsible? How do we measure this with the accountability built into it? So the idea is that it's a living, breathing document, which is then used by your committee to drive your goals, which translate into goals for your superintendent, which then move into the school improvement plans, drive individual school improvement plans, principals' evaluation plans and their goals. And then teachers are required to make goals for part of their evaluation processes. This is the overarching template that drives all of that work. Any questions at all? And then the final step of this, when we get to the timeline, is we're doing phase one in March and April. We begin our committee work in April, conclude in June. It will then go to the school committee for final approval in draft form. Once it's approved by your board, we then send it out to be published. The closest community we did one in recently would be Holliston. So if you want to look at their plan, it should be on their website to give you an idea of what it looks like once it's designed by a graphic designer. Any questions on process?
Just keep in mind, everything that we collect today, we'll go onto those data folders, as Zeph mentioned. So there are three different teams that will be doing this work, and they break out into, you know, community, you know, budget curriculum type groups. And the information that you share tonight will be dropped into those folders, so they can get a sense of anything that may impact that specific group they're working on. This will also be in the data folders with the survey data. So survey will be going out in April, mid-April. It will be open for a week. I'll put together a report. That report will then go into the data folders as well. So there's a folder for each subgroup of the subcommittee. And that will be pretty comprehensive. It's a lot to go through, but it gives us a good sense of what people are thinking currently. Not necessarily the data, what the data is saying about student achievement, stuff like that. Like it's a really good idea of what people's opinions are.
Yeah, when we start analyzing the data and the committee's looking at the data, excuse me, it's not a deep data dive. It's more looking for trends and patterns across the board. And we're starting to see some emerge just after running a handful of forums today. And by the time typically we conclude the forums, we have a good sense of what will resonate with some of the other data. And, you know, the outlying voices make it in the data, but they don't necessarily sustain with the common trends and what we're seeing. So your role here this evening is to provide us with feedback as committee members and community members on the strengths of the district, challenges, potential threats, and opportunities. And as we saw this morning, that oftentimes things can show up as a challenge and an opportunity. Sometimes they show up as all three. For example, you may have, you know, outstanding extracurriculars at the secondary level, but nothing at the elementary. And that would show up as a strength, but also a challenge and an opportunity. So we might ask you, where it shows up, is it also an opportunity? So usually leave this up, but we're going to be working over here. So these are some areas to think about when you're identifying strengths, challenges, and opportunities. Student achievement, academic outcomes, our teaching, learning, and needing resources. Your partnerships in the community, what you have for partnerships, what you don't have for partnerships, and anything else you think that's relevant to the process. So that being said, if you're contacted by someone that says you're a school committee member at Medfield, what's great about the schools? Why should I buy a house here? What do you begin with? What are the strengths?
Garry's going to.
Yeah, we're.
If you want to turn this way, if you want.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
If you turn your chairs around this way. So basically, what I'm doing is I'm taking, I'm capturing what you're saying. We might ask some clarifying questions about the intent, maybe take a little deeper on some of the things you said.
If you want to sit in these low chairs too, if you feel free to come. Say what you want. And we might ask you to clarify. So, you know, communication's come up today in lots of different ways, but communication can mean a million different things.
Yeah. So I would say as a strength, right off the bat, is our focus on the whole child, you know? And it's not strictly just academics. It's social, emotional well-being. It's offerings of extracurricular.
The whole childhood, the balance of how it is.
Yes. Correct, yes.
I would say that one of the strengths I've seen is how creative and strategic we are with the funding that we get. It's also within the, in that because of the financial structure of Medfield and how we pay for our schools, which is almost entirely taxpayer-based, there is always a very good chance that we will get significantly less than, than it takes to actually push programming forward. But I find that Dr. Marston and his administrative team have worked so hard to make sure that we never really ding kids. Unfortunately, we end up dinging the administrative side, and we end up, I think, contributing to a level of potential burnout that would be very difficult to sustain over time.
I put down funding creativity on the strength. But on the other side, financial structure, there's no, there's very limited tax base.
Right.
Commercial.
Right. And there's kind of a limited strategic plan for finance within the town itself.
So is there an opportunity in this?
I think so. I think that there's an opportunity in advocating and making alliances with the town around kind of structured, structured understanding of where budgets go over time, both for the town and for the school. Helping our residents anticipate times in which we might need overrides, not simply for the school.
But you haven't had an override.
Yeah, not for four years. And that was both town and school.
You know, it's interesting, the town said that, not the exact same thing, but something very similar, that there's a good pattern of working together, but there's an alliance that can be made to be able to have the same approach.
Right.
Right? The approach is important.
The approach is very important, though, because I think sometimes on the town side, it's the approach is entirely cost management. When our mandate as school committee members, as people who are elected by the town, is to make sure that we are providing an excellent education, which is expected.
To disconnect with the mission between how it's approached.
Well, it's not only disconnect, it's kind of.
It's not a disconnect, but.
There's no, there's.
No harmony.
It's an ironic bond, right? That which would do the taxpayers the best in the short term, which has had the less.
I'm not unfamiliar with the dance in Mansfield.
Right, exactly.
This was the annual ballet, as they call it, it's like, right?
Yes. But Mansfield also has.
Commercial.
Commercials.
Right, which you don't have.
And we don't have any of that slash one. So actually, when you say, you know, what would you tell somebody to make the move to Medfield? My kind of flip answer is, could you just have like two kids? You know, like, and keep a guest room, right? But there's this kind of sense, people come here for the schools. They stay because they have friends, but they leave because the taxes get too high. And it's a cycle that doesn't end.
Cycle that came up, too.
Yep.
Yeah. So, you know, what they valued at one point becomes what they can't, or choose not to manage later. And we all come to that point at some point.
Right.
But how do we make that workable for everyone? You got all that?
Gary's good. His handwriting's a thousand times better than mine, so he's tasked with writing.
Yeah, okay, good.
So creativity and focus on the kid.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's something that is a strength, right?
Right.
Yeah. Child-centered?
Yeah.
It drives a decision.
And we heard today that the town's investment is children, that that's they, they would like to put their investment towards children, not necessarily some of the other things, because they feel it's important.
But when the rubber hits the road, like, that's a, that's a great statement. But indeed, when the rubber hits the road, it's very hard to get all members of the town to invest in that.
Yes.
Well, because it's tax-based.
It's tax-based, yeah.
What else?
Can we do any of them? Are we still on strengths?
Oh, you could all, you could jump anywhere you want to go.
Plus, it's. You mentioned communication, and that, I mean, coming in, that was going to be my number one thing that I wanted to make sure was on here.
Challenge.
Challenge.
And opportunity.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's an opportunity for sure. I think that, you know, a lot of, I think this is, it's a multifaceted thing when we look at it. But I think the big thing that, for a lot of the things I feel like we should try to be focusing on now, is COVID. How are we coming out of COVID? And I think in a lot of places, trust was lost there, and because trust was lost in a lot of ways.
With the administration?
I mean, I think.
I think as a whole.
Generally, educationally, yes.
And that.
As a situation.
Trickles down.
Yes, and I think what I've been seeing or hearing now is, you know, you hear some, the school home approach and kind of like the communication there. When I think about communication, I feel like we get information from, you know, we get information from the superintendent, we get information from the principal, we get information from the teachers as parents, and if one of those communication is wrong, the whole communication strategy is wrong. Do you know what I mean? Like, you miss something from one teacher, and all of a sudden, it's just like, oh.
See, this is.
And then it's on Facebook about what jerks you are. Yes, kind of, but so.
It's the balance between more communication and too much communication.
I think it's actually having a stronger communication strategy. I think the problem right now is there's not a director of communication. There's nobody to turn to.
I would say I would come to.
There's no training around any of it. So everyone's allowed to their own devices on how they communicate home. But when you have kids in multiple schools, or you're switching every year to a new teacher, you're constantly being introduced to a new communication strategy that may or may not work for you.
We heard that directly from parents today, same bring was the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it also relates to the tax base and to this kind of understanding that we need to, not only within our own schools, but within the community, be effectively communicating what we do here, why we might do it, what it is that we need in a way that doesn't feel piecemeal and doesn't feel so only centered on a population that have, you know, a third of households don't have to think about it anymore, right?
Right.
So how are we putting out our public face to the community?
So I think you touched upon the need for a communications director, which is, a lot of communities have, is the two of that position, just for the very needs he just drives.
And that could be an alliance with the town, right? Because they also has a communication director. Or an alliance with other districts.
What's tied into that communication piece, I think, is that we don't own our narrative, you know? Maybe we're starting to.
Who's, who's? Tell me more.
Yeah, so the administration, the school committee, you know.
Okay. Own your narrative how?
How in terms of sharing out what actually happens. I think, you know, Michelle has started some of social media pieces to like get out when we have meetings and big picture stuff.
So more of a presence for the committee to get the message out beyond the meetings, or?
Well, I think this ties in more to what Michelle was saying in terms of we don't have a communication strategy.
Right, and you know, how we present ourselves.
So other folks. Outside the committee, out into the community, kind of, they're the voice of the committee. They frame it the way they want to frame it. And because either we don't have the time, the energy, whatever, to kind of address every, everything that's going on.
So it takes a lot of capacity to do that.
Yes, that's the word. We just don't have the capacity.
And neither do our administrators right now. I mean, our administrators are straight out.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't have to explain how it like kind of you have a baseline, a superintendent's life is straight out. But everyone in that office is straight out. I mean, even during COVID, my God.
Straight out before COVID and during, in a sense, it's been, right?
Right, and then got even harder, and we push and we push. And it's why, you know, I think one of the challenges and the opportunities that we have is that, you know, currently, we know that we have, we have Jeff for five years, right? He's, we renegotiated his contract last year, we have him.
You have a long, lot of longevity on your administrative team, too.
We have, and we have a lot of longevity.
You really feel that's unusual.
And many of them are coming to their twenty-fifth year. Like, in the next five years, it's entirely possible we're going to be looking at some major transitions.
Yep.
In an environment outside of Medfield that is kind of impoverished in terms of your hiring pool. So how do we address that?
Correct.
Obviously, our job is superintendency, but, I mean, it's like musical chairs.
Forty openings, right?
Right, and, and the, yeah. Well, I mean, even if you look at, like, I'm reading about Wayland. Wayland doesn't currently have a superintendent, they have an acting superintendent. Their acting superintendent is going to Lincoln Sudbury as the permanent superintendent, and they're looking for somebody basically to fill the seat and make sure that the bilge gets pumped, you know? Like, for the next year.
Lot of lateral movement.
And are they going to have, and that superintendent was quite young coming into, and into the position. And that is many, many districts of the kind of caliber of Medfield are beginning to see that there is not the professional kind of.
That's right.
You know, gravitas that a town.
The experience necessary to actually run the districts at a high level.
Right. Right.
It takes time to get there, right?
Right, and build relationships and understand kind of what that is. So there's going to be a point where we're really going to be needing to look at that.
So is the, so is the opportunity to have a plan for developing?
For transitions?
Transitions, but how about homegrown talent as well?
Well, that's another thing. I mean, sometimes I worry about homegrown talent because I think it's important to have fresh eyes, but in, but in.
So the ability, a balance between growing homegrown talent and recruiting quality administrators when the need arises.
Right.
But I also think that's a strength, that having, we had much.
But I do think that. Jeff has been excellent with that.
Yes, so I just want to make sure, because I think staffing is a challenge, but, you know, we have, we've had stability.
Yes.
For ten-plus years, not.
Which is unusual.
Which, you know, so I, if Gary could put that as a strength.
Yeah.
In terms of our, of our experience, stability, and what have you.
It's your, it's your whole team. We would, we would notice that was a number of years that the people around the table this morning have been in their positions in the district.
Yeah, and until next year, we'd be school committee as well, you know?
Yeah.
That, you know, Jeff and I have been on for quite some time.
And I think people, you know, I think the people before this had seen this as at least a six-year commitment, if not nine.
Commitment. Yeah.
Now, it's, you know, it's harder to be on school committee, and so we need to be thinking about recruitment, people who are aware of the district, where that comes from, but that's school committee, kind of.
But that's still the strength.
But it's cross, yeah, it's cross, I think.
Yeah, so go back to communication, I put down after COVID, help build trust, consistency, stronger communication strategy. P R to clarify, to clearly communicate what's happening in the schools, the need for a communications director. And currently, there's a capacity issue to actually get all of that done within the current structure. And then one of the things it did say is, which is a challenge, is, you know, future challenge, is thinking about staffing, administrative staffing.
Recruitment.
Yeah.
And I put here opportunities, recruiting for future needs, administration, et cetera. That's, that, that, I mean.
You know, how do we build a pool?
Yes. I was, and I mentioned to the administrators this morning that that's amazing to see the cohesiveness of that team. They, I'm not sure if you've ever seen them work together, they just put on the table. They all feel that they're contributing.
Yes.
And again, that is also something that Dr. Marston's worked very hard to engender here. And is a very different style than the previous superintendent. I think it's interesting that there's a whole generation of parents here who have never known anything but Jeff Marston. And so think he's like baseline, and he is not. It's anime, I have seen what else can happen.
Yeah.
And so, and it's different styles, but it's also, it's going to be a metropopural shift, no matter who comes in.
Well. One is your, one is your fifteen, because that's how long you can have them, right?
So another strength I would put down is, you know, dedicated, dedicated staff, teaching staff.
I was going to bring that up, just by our, our experience with negotiating literally every single contract group last year.
That's common.
Yeah, I'm so grateful. I mean, and if you saw.
Bing bang boom.
Yeah.
Like our, our, the way that we worked together for that contract negotiation for teachers, we had four years of development now with a lot of things that everybody looked towards.
Would you add support staff as well?
Hundred thousand percent.
Yeah.
We're very fortunate here.
Right. It's nice to hear the school committee recognizes.
No, of course, of course.
No, we, I mean, we understand we're kind of in la-la land here. I think, you know, like, we.
It's not perfect.
No, nothing's perfect, trust me.
Yeah, but it's, we're fortunate.
But I think that people don't necessarily realize that when people come from other districts or other situations, they say, you don't, you don't know what you have. I've never seen anything this, but I can't believe my kid got these services. I can't believe that, you know, there are so many things that we try to do so.
So there's parental satisfaction as a strength in terms of.
Yeah, it can be.
I mean, it's.
There's always, you know. But I think overall.
You know, I'm asking.
Yes, I think, yes, we have the gamut. Unfortunately, you know, to what Michelle's point about, you know, during COVID, you know, this, this breakdown of trust that, but that's.
Do you think that's specific to Medfield?
Absolutely not, no.
No institution.
I don't think it's.
No, but I think it's.
So it's the origin.
No matter what, yeah.
Breakdown of trust.
No matter what, we're going to have to fight against it or work with it.
The.
Figure out a, figure out a way.
So it's an institutional.
Completely, but it's not only just within the schools, it's within the town. And I think many towns.
We're getting a lot more town input around kind of traditions, morality, you know, things that people feel strongly about who are not within the school department necessarily, but are really spending a lot of time kind of focusing on things like, you know, how do we, how do we preserve kids' ability to see, you know, people who are like them and also.
Is it D E I related?
Extraordinarily, yeah.
Yes.
But it's also things like, you know, again, school, school funding, literally, how do we build schools? And think about education in the long term. You know, obviously, we had a failed school project, and a project that should never have failed, you know? But, yeah, elementary schools are hard to pass. Elementary schools during a pandemic are harder to pass. And, you know, we're going to end up feeling that. And I think that that's in the case of almost every school we've ever had.
The timing of that didn't really work.
No, but it also has happened to us traditionally over time. I, which is probably why we only build a school every fifty years, and then we kind of throw some plaster at the walls every twenty or thirty, and even those fail, you know?
But I think it goes back to your point around the tax base of student on the homeowners, not, you know, there's no deep pockets anywhere else abroad.
But sometimes I think that there's a strong streak of also government bad, which really cropped up with the MSBA process this time, that I think was, to some extent, you know, part of the, part of the kind of culture of the town to some extent, but also was multiplied by this general sense of loss of trust in institutions. You know, and it's an organization that was built to save towns money. We decided to reject twenty million dollars from them because we thought they were asking us to overbuild, and yet we're going to have a project that's going to cost twice as much or half as much. I know, and we can be, I just feel like really important to point out that this is a, there is a reality and a pattern to this because of how our tax base is made up, but it's also been escalated in the last several years. And I don't know that that kind of institutional trust is going to come back.
And this is in the general problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'd like to mention another opportunity, and I think this whole strategic plan process is an opportunity. I felt that in the last time we had. Um I felt that in the last time we had these um public forums, it's an opportunity for the community to come forth. And we're here with open ears, open hearts, open minds, that we really wanna engage folks, and we really wanna hear from people. So I'm really looking forward to just opening those doors and having those forums and um inviting the community to share.
And how do we solidify that within the culture so that, you know, we know now that we've kind of culturally changed Medfield a lot of ways over the last even six years. Six years ago, we would never even thought about what SEL stood for, and now it is by necessity, but even before the pandemic, it had become part of our culture. I think that DEI, no matter how you spell the initials, has become more and more a part of the culture, there's a lot more to go. But it's there, it's not something that we're ignoring, or thinking does apply to us, right? Um and we're we're having an understanding that every child comes to the table with a diversity of ideas, cultures, family, um.
That came up to the in the economic piece too, that the kind of the invisible.
Yeah. The invisible kind of, yeah.
Poverty that you might not know.
Yeah. Well, and the extraordinary range of incomes.
Right.
So that even kids who kind of live with a very solid, comfortable middle to upper middle class life feel as though they're, you know, that they're massive phomom. Because they see their friends who, you know, it's it's very hard to kind of be in this small group with large comparisons.
Yep.
So I put DEI is becoming a fabric of the district slash focus of the district, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we put another opportunity up too, cuz I really wanna see that grown.
On. Yeah. Oh, yes. And I also think it's in the challenges in terms of educating community what that what that actually means.
I just took a lot of them for a fact.
Masses, yeah. Yes, yeah.
And removing this idea that people have that it's a a challenge to them instead of the opening.
Right.
Does it speak to communication again?
It does, um. It also speaks to the the communication of and the commitment to the culture of listening, and listening is different than rolling, you know. Like, I I think one of the things that we've kind of said at different times is that you always listen, but you don't vote on what's morally the right thing to do, right? When we changed and started to look at the our our old previous logo, the memorial logo, we um. I think we felt strongly that we needed to hear what people had to say, but this was not going to be like kind of a popular vote around racism.
Never is, no.
Right? It's and so sometimes there are decisions that the committee will make, some maybe because that's the right thing to do. And I think sometimes we need to help spread the education that we the leader working with. Um and spend more time trying to engage the town with them, and I mean the town at large as well. You know, we're doing it, we're trying to do a lot of work, the town itself um spends as much time as they can kind of avoiding the issue.
We haven't touched on partnerships in the community at all, um came up with some of the other ones, and you can't see the screen, so it's nice to have that.
Yeah, partners, students, faculty, staff, families, community partners. You know, we're very fortunate here in Medfield to have, you know, parent run organizations such as the Medfield Coalition for Public Education. The PTOs, um Medfield Music Association, the theater, so I I feel.
CPAC.
CPAC, thank you, um I feel that those kind of parent school organizations that we are, we're solid. I mean, we can all, every every aspect can improve, but I do feel like we are thankfully supported by those organizations.
I would also bring uh the Medfield outreach into that, and the amount of work that they are uh doing.
Oh, yeah.
And spending time trying to make connections into the school and that we're working with them much more now.
And we heard that they participate in school site councils, which is highly greatly, highly unusual.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, we are so fortunate.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that there's a, I think that there are opportunities within that if we can start building partnerships again with community organizations. That do not have direct contact sometimes within the school district, but have greater kind of um kind of influence in terms of.
Can connect with the non non square population.
Connect with the non square population.
Non community members.
People uh or organizations like, you know, the Council on Aging wheel is kind of put out there, but that's not every.
Right.
I think a lot of the time we put the word council on aging as like shorthand for everyone over sixty five in the town of Medfield. But very few people actually do participate within the COA in that, you know, in that demographic. So how do we build partnerships with uh so that our town really can see our schools as something that is meant for the entire community? Is that working with community ed, is that expanding some of the offerings? Do are we able to help our um are we able to help our parents, our grandparents, community members understand more about DEI? Understand more about SEL, understand about child development, some of the things we run into sometimes. Um that can be a revenue driver for us, but can also be a community kind of uh opportunity.
Interesting.
You know, and I think that 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 one of the things I I've been most concerned about since covid is that. We really used almost all of our resources to make sure that our kids had computers, that we weren't firing all of our workers. And now reserve funds and kind of that free money that is so hard to come by is really gone, and I know.
It's there's the challenges in sustainability of the money that came in during covid.
Right. And things like gate fees and athletic fees and.
Right, that fees came up for that.
Yeah, building partner or, you know, partnerships in terms of doing community ed and finding those people, and those are the things that can add to those revolving funds. That allow us to have the flexibility to be able to think about things like, can we offer full day kindergarten tuition free to every kid? Because right now, um the kids who need it are often the ones who are only in half day because they can't do four thousand dollars a year.
Came up.
And that's that's DEI, but that's also just the reality of the funding, how do we start lowering that tuition so that it becomes equitable to everyone? Because I don't know about you, but I don't know how people, it, we we base, you know, tuition assistance on free lunch. Or reduced lunch, and that is a tough bar to reach in Medfield, and there are plenty of parents and plenty of kids who.
Right, there's a big gap.
It is a big gap between a livable wage in Medfield and being able to get housing here.
Right. Yep.
And, you know, a family that's making, you know, has three kids and is making a hundred thousand dollars a year and is trying to figure out how to pay for housing with that. And here is still in need of assistance.
Tough, very tough.
Huge challenge.
And it seems, so that's a kind of a constant thing, again, it's all about the money, but how do we, how do we do, how do we do three things at once? Like, what's the most efficient process we could possibly have?
I think another challenge um that I'm thinking of is really that the school system or the school district. Um there is an expectation that we should have all the answers to all the problems, um.
Yeah. We're the last social service organization that is universal in the country, I like that the schools are it now, it used to be that there were multiple safety nets, and now.
And school, all the schools are responsible for a lot of things that are even their primary function, I used to tell people, I run the business biggest restaurant in Mansfield, cuz they serve more meals than anyone on a given day.
Right. Right. Yeah. Exactly. So we're feeding our kids.
That's not even the business I'm in, right?
We're making sure that they're A and I's, we're offering them healthcare, we're providing their mental health care.
Exactly.
Right. And then umbrella gets, and safety net gets wider and wider, right?
Wider, wider, and it's underneath.
And when it goes wrong or when the the need isn't filled, it's our fault, and and you know, and and I, I mean, we.
Social media exacerbates the whole thing too.
Yeah.
So I put down district expectation that schools just figure it out, that, you know, it's a major challenge. And um you should, and it's it's one of those things that the schools will have a plan, the district will have a plan with covid.
Yeah, it's kind of like the parentification of service, right? Like that we're we're mom and dad, and we should be able to kind of do all of this stuff, right?
And then you go into the plan, nobody likes it.
And then. Yeah, nobody.
Yeah, and then you, yeah, right, lane keeps getting wider that you're gonna stay in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're not servicing everyone.
No.
We're not providing, you know, we still have, even though I feel like we focused a lot on SEL supports and hiring, we can still do more.
Well, and and those are the things that have directly impacted instruction.
Yeah. Yeah.
As the the social emotional needs of students have really impacted our ability to deliver curriculum.
It's great.
So it's not something that can be ignored, it does fall within the umbrella.
Right.
But there are things that have become expectations outside of that that don't necessarily to impact instruction.
And another, I feel like major challenge, I don't think exactly, is uh the facilities challenges we have in the lower elementary schools. Um we seem to have a recurrent space issue in Memorial and Dale, and we talked about that, the school that had.
And the middle school project, if it goes through, will help alleviate that, middle school building.
The four five school.
Four five school.
Is it the four five?
Yeah, yeah, uh that that's been determined. I don't know, I honestly don't know, I really feel like, you know, I don't know how.
You mean, you know, if it's gonna fly, as opposed to how?
It'll fly, eventually, it'll fly, I don't know what it's gonna look like, I don't know how long it's gonna last, and I don't know how. I don't know how long, how much political capital we're gonna end up using to pass this one building. When indeed, we're working with five buildings that are all at their bones approaching anywhere between, you know, fifty to seventy five years old.
My understanding, MSBA's approach is a little bit of a reinvasion sort of, so.
Yeah. So, um and again, it's it's that kind of constant balance between how how do we get people invested in uh the future of their town? When they feel like maybe this is not a town for people who are not of John Bearin age anymore, and I think that that's, I think that's a myth. I think that there's a significant portion of elders in town.
See, we heard, we heard um that people, people tend, did we, Gary? People tend to stay, they they.
They wanna stay.
They wanna stay.
It's becoming more and more that they wanna stay, that they're getting.
Or they come back and have their families, so they leave and then they return.
Yes.
They come back, but then.
They get ordered.
But then they, once they have, they don't have kids anymore, then they leave.
Right, yeah.
That's what we heard.
Or, yeah, that it's, I mean, and part of that is the size of the housing, the difficulty, you know, like a huge amount of the housing that was built in Medfield. When there's a the explosion of the population from the the, you know, eighties, the nineties, specifically in the nineties. And all of a sudden, we started building four and five bedroom houses on one acre lots because we wanted to work on, you know, not overcrowding. And one acre in a four bedroom house is not conducive to aging in place, you know.
No, right.
And so the the housing stock may or may not be there, you were getting little bits, but it's not quite at the level people are thinking about, you know. This feels, it feels hard to downsize here.
Plus the price. Well, it's hard to say, no, they're moving out when your prep house is gonna happen so much, and you just really have the opportunity.
Right. Yeah. And you bought a house in nineteen, you know, even ninety four, and you bought it for five hundred thousand dollars, and now it's one point three BBS.
Right. Right, probably see the people's expectations of whoever's gonna go, so, right.
Yeah.
Well, it's that tough balance between the new people and the expectation of I bought a house for, and that house comes with a good, a good school system.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then you have people that don't have kids anymore, and I think I'm done paying them.
Right, but they still expect the school system to be good and like it was when my kids went through, and education has changed so much, and it's complete.
So back to your, back to the space comment at the elementary school, how is this housing shift playing into your enrollment?
So much. Yeah.
Is that something that, is is it a moving target, is it stable, is it trends and patterns around it, is it, is that a challenge, is that anything that?
You just step in with it.
I mean, I would say for Memorial, which is the, you know, pre K through one, it feels like every year that I've had a kid in school, so the past five or six years now. There's always a question if there's enough enough space at Memorial, every year, yeah, every year there's conversation around space at Memorial. Um I don't think that that's going anywhere, my youngest is going next year in his class based on the one that I taught yesterday.
Is your enrollment stable, or are you seeing fluctuations?
We, these guys love when I use this term, we see pigs in a book, we get classes that expand enormously from year to year. And and so you will have.
You have a bulge.
A class, yeah, like uh our youngest son's class was, was it, it's, it was one of the big ones, right? Was that one of the big ones?
A bubble, bubble.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, and it was like, everybody was like, oh my god, like, how can you have a class this big?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But two years after that, and it's very recession based, and you know, it was the smallest class ever. But we get more kids coming in now through various grades too, and that's difficult.
And you lose, you lose very few kids to tri county, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, we lose kids to private school because they're either legacy or, you know, again, this kind of expectation of achievement and being able to.
Right.
Minutely meet the need behind each other, um and I'm right there, I had kids who was pre at school now too, but for very different reasons than that. But um it's, but those are where we lose it, and it's, but it's never as much as you think, you know? And and there's also, you know, we've had classes that have had twenty five added to them simply because parents are like, I I don't feel like my kid's ready. We have a a class, a class of twenty seven that had twenty five kids held.
Who were held back.
Held, you know, and their parents decided to enroll them late, or whatever, and then all of a sudden, that adds an enormous.
Yeah, yeah. That's right, it's a huge strength.
Number within a class that generally kind of, you know, hovers around two hundred.
Class.
That could be opposed, opposed calls, so I'm gonna too.
So I put down a bubble, and how does the district manage fluctuations with limited space?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. We're looking at a class in what, three years that's coming in at two fifty eight, and the year before that will be one seventy six.
Yeah, that's a real bubble.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, how do you, how do we do that class?
That's right.
There was some possibility that we could have done that class if we look at flexibility of space, unless they, one of the things that we've been talking about with our new schools. It's like, how do we build them flex space so that if we need to, all of a sudden, class, uh school becomes a three grade.
A compact ball. You don't want empty classrooms, but at the same time, right?
Yeah, but not every school. Yeah. You know, if I don't have my Spanish teacher, my art teacher, my music teacher running around with a cart.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, how is that quality education?
They they, yeah, the MSBA, and that's probably what some parents don't like, is the MSBA has a model, they don't like flex spaces, they don't like, they give you a percentage over for that for that tolerance.
Oh, yeah.
They don't let you plan for the future, they do, you know, they do the colored survival method, so you can see how many kids you're expecting for the next fifteen years. That's kind of like um crystal ballish.
And we kind of got stuck in a, in a little bit of a, a difficulty there because at the time that we were starting to build this elementary school or planning for it.
Hmm.
The MSBA uh had just had the um Hopkinton Experience.
Mm-hmm.
Where their, you know, their population had exploded, and so they wanted us to build significantly larger, and the population wasn't necessary.
Yep. That's, yeah, that was a functioning UMC, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And well, even less so than that, I think that Hopkinton just baked fast cuz they were, were a little unlooking for the housing.
And they had space to build them homes, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of space, but I think we have more space than we think, I just did the open space analysis, and the open space um plan. That I'm doing for the full town, and I spent a lot of time looking at a lot of properties, thinking there's way more kind of at risk space than we think there is in town.
So facilities too, though, our four five is the one that just didn't pass as a new elementary school, and that as a teaching space is a challenge.
That even as a space around equity and around, you know, accessibility.
I think the teachers. Yes, yes, everything, yes, I mean, I think the teachers and the staff, they're doing an amazing job, but on our facilities, that is a, I don't know, a big obvious.
I have no, I have no idea how they're gonna ever take that school if we do a renovation. I have no, I have no idea how they're gonna ever take that school if we do a renovation and and I just, because I'm not an engineer and this is not where I am, but I have no idea how we'll ever take that school and make it an equitable renovation instead of kind of plastering lipstick. Because there's, I mean, it was built literally as a bunk, a bunker. So there's, you know, those walls are structural. They're not. It's not gonna be easy to take that bigger.
So I'm looking at your sheet there. So student achievement, so academic outcomes at all levels, college career readiness. Um I'm very proud of our students. I mean, I I know um on the whole, we've got, you know, students who either go off to university, do gap years, you know, the military, um. Hi, I'm.
I would say that ninety-eight percent of our kids go to a four-year institution for the most part. Um.
I think we're doing it better than John Lawley.
Historically, but I don't know.
Right, I know.
Promoting.
I don't know that that's gonna continue necessarily with our current generation. I think that there are families that are looking to different um
Oh, that's okay.
Opportunities, yeah.
Different pathways.
But how do we, how do we, instead of building that airplane in the air?
Sure.
How do we institution, how do we put that into um practice within the schools that we are able to have a plan for the kids who do not choose or are
Exactly.
not academically making it for whatever reason.
So what are the, what are the pathways for the non-college?
Yeah, because we don't really have a lot of pathways.
Right.
You know, virtually everything here is a student.
It's not a college track, what is it?
As a parent, right.
And I think that's also a challenge because everybody's on the college choo-choo train and people.
Yeah. And it does.
It's not for everybody.
You know, no, it is not for everyone.
No, but.
It's to make folks, families, students feel that it's okay to explore other options. I think we are getting better at promoting gap year options that we could certainly improve.
Like, oh.
Yeah.
Right. That falls into, that falls into the diversity piece as well, is it?
Yeah, it's an airplane in the air thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's an economic diversity thing as well.
Correct.
And, you know, we expect our kids to go to a four-year college and, oh my god, they're expensive.
Yeah.
Right.
And how do you, how do you sustain, you know, any kind of life for your kids? How do you sustain any kind of life for yourself? How do you, any of these things? Um if the the push is for the best, you know, like the and the one that's like the right name. So there's kind of a cultural part to this where, you know,
Stats, stats.
every, everything, yeah, there's a massive FOMO kind of.
So I wrote, I wrote this and I don't know if you support it, but it's what I'm hearing.
Changing narrative on college four-year is the only way to succeed.
Right.
Yes.
Or that there are choices, kids and.
Okay.
Families have choices, yeah.
Choices. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
And and those kids deserve the same education and the same kind of rigor as as the rest of everybody else.
Now, they, so about awareness of other pathways, is the conversation within the schools around what?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If if not college, then what are your other priorities?
Now, this may help, um it under opportunities, it's progressive pathway development.
Beautiful.
Right, so it's, it's prog, you're thinking about the future, right?
Sounds mostly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think that ties in with this.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
Yeah.
And kind of this idea that, you know, September thirtieth, the year after you graduate is gonna come for everybody. Where are you? What are you doing that day? Right? And having kids really kind of, and families really commodize that. Is is it the right thing to be, you know, hanging out on Parents Weekend at Clemson or whatever, right? Like, is that really your path or is that what we think?
Well, we did, um, I did a a portrait of the graduate work with the school, uh district down the cape. We just finished it up. And the biggest concern the school district has with graduates at this stage of their um post-secondary life is persistence.
Mm-hmm.
Because a high number of kids are going, but a low number of kids aren't actually succeeding.
Yeah, and that puts you in economic straits.
Yes.
And it's based to expectations and conversations and exploring pathways prior to.
That are just. Beyond, yeah. Is it a certain point?
Is you going because you really wanna go? Are you going because?
You've been in the more friendly.
This is half, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Well, again, it's the voice of children. I remember having uh students that were extremely gifted in arts, in the arts. And I remember this one student had a um, um, a full ride scholarship um in in um, I think it was UMass Lowell uh Communications uh Art Program that they had. And he, he was an unbelievable artist and his parents just forbid him to go into 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 the arts. Because they had this mentality of, well, you're gonna be a starving artist the rest of your life.
Hmm.
I don't know that we did a good job of informing parents that today to have design in your background is huge.
Yeah.
You can write your own ticket in a sense, if you have that creativity. It's a creativity side that we need to focus on. And it's, it's, I think this opportunity is is also for parents to understand what those pathways look like, right?
And that builds very much into SEO. Builds very much into how you kind of let off the gas at these times where we know that there are there are uh rubbing points, right? Your second half of junior year, virtually every kid is overstressed and freaking out about where they're supposed to be looking, what they're supposed to be doing and da, 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 da. And their parents are too.
Entertaining, if it came up, everybody's entertaining, getting on that college track, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Cottage industry to be in right now.
That's been in this town forever.
And the other thing is.
On a town, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like, how are we servicing? So if that is the full kind of question for our kids, how are we working with our students who um who are in uh special education and for whom college may not be appropriate?
Right, success isn't necessarily college.
Like, how are we, how are we defining these things and how are we bringing those kids
Right.
into inviting them to the table of our cul, of the culture of Medfield, right? Because there is a real kind of difference between everybody like kind of moving like a herd towards college, 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 but but there is a whole kind of invisible group
It's the belonging piece.
of kids who are not moving towards that, who are not moving towards that in the most traditional way. How do you build that culture?
How do they feel connected?
Yeah.
So do them use teaching, learning, leading, instruction programs, critical leadership, climate and culture?
You don't have to hit every target.
No, I know, but but still, I just wanna use this as like a guideline. And that is, um, so as much as we appreciate and value and are grateful, you know, for the um teaching and support staff that we do have, I I have a feeling that many of them don't feel as valued as they uh as just as valued or as free to, because of the general climate um in town, maybe feel that they can't share.
Oh, yeah.
what they do in class for fear of being, and I don't even know if I'm saying this properly, so ladies, you can help me. You know, for fear of being, not reprimanded, but being um feared of um.
For being chastised for who they are?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Well, I mean, I think that we're, we're dancing around an example right now, which um.
But it's, it's a, it's a reality.
One of our staff members became essentially a, a focal point for um.
This is a reality. But it's not just that one.
Vicious.
It's, it's, it's.
She was the big one, I would agree with that, but there was others.
It was a trickle.
But there's other things that are like, that's the biggest.
I think about fear, fear, fear of exposure, bugs, fear of how to dance around certain topics.
Yes, or even fear to post, fear to post anything, you know?
Fear to share, fear to share the successes of your classroom is what I, what was frustrating to me about some of, cause I know who you're talking about, but the trickle-down effect is what was upsetting to me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because it resulted in not, not being able to see the successes in the classroom if you, if you didn't have direct contact with that teacher. And I think that that was important from a narrative and a story standpoint to be able to still have out there.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a degree of fear in public education that wasn't present prior.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been the last few years.
Yeah.
There's, there's just a fearfulness for.
It's really elevated the last year, I would think.
Well, it's, it's, it's the narrative indoctrination in 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 how that is identified out of context and social media contributes to this some of hysteria around this. And there's a degree of fear and hysteria, I think.
Yeah, it's that feeling of belonging, right? Do you belong or not? And I think, I think.
Yeah.
And so it becomes this kind of like.
That's right.
Parting in, you know, like everything is so much more segmented and you have to like declare your allegiance to one
Yeah.
or another or another.
There's more calling power versus bringing in.
Well, it's not gonna the population. Yes, so it's, it's, I put equity includes in belonging.
Yeah.
Equity at a, at a, in big terms, right? District-wide.
Yeah.
This isn't necessarily a function just in Medfield, it's given.
No, no.
No.
No, but it is what we.
It is. But it's impacting what's going on.
Our experience, yeah.
That'll, yeah.
You know, I can say maybe.
And in a town as small as ours.
I've asked five different teachers from five different schools, how's it going? And you see that.
Hmm hmm.
Oh, you know, and it's just, I thought, damn.
Yeah.
It's, you know, they're, they're working so hard and they wanna be proud of the achievements that are happening, but they're very um hesitant to to display that for fear of.
And you started off with just validating a success too. How do we validate and celebrate the successes and sustain that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Without criticizing, without.
And I think that, that. We're trying to validate though if they don't validate.
We're taking it from that.
Show that they are.
Yes.
You can't celebrate somebody if you're not in the classroom seeing what they're doing every day, right? So like this inability for them to be able to share their successes, you know, come, becomes a circular pattern of not being able to celebrate or validate that, right? Like this fear.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the opportunity?
And fear leads to shame.
Yeah.
Shame leads to burnout on fears.
Well, I, I put on the opportunity is, is that's, even though we did talk about the awareness at the beginning of the conversation, we talked about how um DEI and equity, you, we, they, the district has made a shift. We, we've started a shift in the district, but work still needs to be done on DEI and this whole concept of the law.
Yeah.
Oh.
And it will actually always be part. I mean, I think that that's the, the most important part is, again, how do we put
That's true.
the, the concepts covered under DEI, not so much as something that we lend initials to, but that just is what we think of universally
Right, that.
all the time as part of our culture.
It's a cultural thing.
It's, it's always the question, right? For every kid. It's always a question about how are we doing this? What are we doing? And so we no longer have to kind of hold a checklist.
That's bad. Right. Good. Yeah, good. I think that, that's a strong statement saying that we, we've started the work, there's a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
I tipped my hand.
I told you, you got the three.
Been slapping on my game away through.
Oh, I, yeah, well, you know, we, we had some extras, but we'd use the extras. What do you need? I was gonna take this one down, I'm sorry about that. I have to transfer it, I do it voice, voice dictation, so it goes.
Okay.
All right. What else?
I don't want the challenge.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
I feel like, I feel like we said this earlier too, but I feel like there's a challenge sometimes with understanding that, you know, when I went to school many moons ago, we sat, we sat on our desks and the teacher stood up front and that was it and they, they, they told me what to do. And that was, you know, I mean, maybe I had like a worksheet or whatnot, but today's um, today's educational world is a lot more project-based, a lot more hands-on learning. And I feel that that is not understood by the general community. And I think that if we could get that understanding of how it's different than it used to be, how we've progressed and how this is how kids learn now, um.
It's more authentic.
Yeah, but I think that would be, I just, I feel like that's a constant struggle, like not understanding, why are they doing it like this? Why is it happening like this? Why is it not being done the way it was, you know?
It's the awareness of the progress of education models that exist, but again, as I said, it's how do you publicize it? How do you have PR?
Yeah.
Right, how do you share it, yeah. And again, it's a community ed where, you know, like you have, you know,
Social fact communication. Yeah.
how do you go to school day, right? Or whatever, where you invite parents in the community and then you have a, an authentic learning
Yeah.
kind of experience that day where a teacher teaches you differently than you may have learned fifty years ago, right?
Yeah.
One of my kind of loadstones, strangely enough, this little girl will never know that, uh, this, this little girl I knew in, in second grade and she in art did this most amazing cut-out project and it was in the shape of, um, she was supposed to make a, a square house and she made the White House. And it had columns and she's seven years old and she got into so much trouble for cutting out the wrong shape and doing the wrong thing because it wasn't the instruction that she had been given. And so the emphasis was on the instruction and being able to do the thing that you were told to do. Most, and this was art class, by the way, um, and we don't do the, you know, now, we would look at that and say, wow, Betsy, you really took that? And you took it like three different steps. Do you see this boy? What did Betsy do here that was different? You know, than what I had asked for? And sometimes we can think differently and what does this look like? And can you make a convention? Betsy would have had a whole different thing. And all I can think is, you know, Betsy had kind of a, kind of elementary school life, you know, like, cause Betsy was always gonna be like that. So how do we kind of teach people?
It's more individualized.
What it's, you know, that, that, that we care for each kid now in a way that's really important. And how we involve people in having those lessons? Because when you do it.
Well, that, that's the, that's the first comment, we teach the whole child.
Yeah.
So.
I put down how do, how do classes operate in twenty twenty-three? Like, what's, what does that look like?
Yeah.
And then also inform the community on how that works.
Yeah.
Right, one thing, one thing that I did that I really enjoyed a lot when I was superintendent, I started this program called Superteach. Where I would walk into a classroom, the kids would teach me, the teachers would be just watching. But if we'd have TV, like cameras come in and they would follow me everywhere and the kids would show me from cosmetology to cake decorating to um elementary classes, uh, uh, talking about a reading lesson, an English lesson, whatever, whatever. We, we just, I would do about ten of them a year. And I would do that every, every year so that people could see that this is a, this is a different way of allowing kids to be engaged in their education opposed to being teacher-directed, which you were saying earlier. Not stand and deliver, it's an engagement of children into their learning. One of the things that we do in, in walkthroughs, we do a lot of walkthroughs in schools around the country from Texas, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, Massachusetts. We want teachers to not teach so hard.
Yeah.
Kids do the car lift.
We want them to do the car lift. The chi, we're, we're guiding, teachers are guiding, because we want them to be the motivators opposed to being the teachers just working so hard, right?
Right.
We want kids to be engaged. When they come home, they tell you, this is what I learned today, because I actually taught them a lesson. So it's kind of a different approach, but a kid goes home and says that to a parent, you're gonna say, well, why are you teaching? We gotta teach you there, right?
Yeah, and we think about why a publication was set up, right?
For sure.
And when you went to school and even in, you're like, we didn't, keep on saying, you're like, we didn't have iPads for God's sake.
It's a different.
Until two thousand what, nine?
It's, it's a change.
Two thousand ten, like, we didn't have those. And now we just consider it like a part of life.
That's right. Yeah.
But even before that, we were not teaching kids to have the jobs that we didn't know about. And that's, you know, it's the mantra, but it's also, we were teaching the jobs we knew about before and now we, we don't know what those jobs are.
Correct. The kids will tell us when we meet with them in, in April, they're gonna tell us what you're telling us.
Mm-hmm.
That we want excitement, we want to be engaged. We, not, not to say that teachers aren't working hard and they're not trying to engage them, but I made the example, I gave the example today with administrators that I used to hear all the time from kids that they feel that their life outside of the schools is vivid color. When they come into, into schools, like to watch them like on TV.
Ooh.
Yeah, that's quite the statement.
Because they come in as like.
Surge. Right, because here I am.
What's, what's there here for me?
And what's my, what's, again, and, and we have all had these feelings. I, I felt it very strongly about, you're kind of like, what? So what is out front? Why would I do this?
Hmm.
Right? Like, is it an exploration about how am I supposed to be an engineer and why am I spending so much time on it and what? You know, like, there are all these things that, that don't seem to apply to what they will then someday have to teach themselves anyway in their career, right?
When we do the learning walks, we we ask students, uh, what are you doing? And then we get to the why, why are you doing this? And how are you answer the whys we're revealing to us?
And how many of us have jobs that we haven't actually, you know, we may have some baseline understanding of what it is that we're supposed to do, but really indeed what we do is end up learning from somebody else and on our own and we build it on our own. It's, you know, there are very few jobs that are checkmarks.
Correct, yeah. Well, one of the master, master the content, right?
Meanwhile.
And this mastery with complete understanding and knowing why it's important, right? And then they they can, they that creativity goes from there. A lot of times we have kids, kids, kids wanna get the A and sometimes they get the A because that's what you do. I'm not so concerned that much, I'm not that concerned about the A, I'm concerned concerned that I want them to understand why the A is important.
Hmm.
Right? And it's that lifelong, that lifelong building, cause we're talking about these alternative pathways. We want them to know what they want to do and that instruction inspires them to wanna take that challenge. Right? Uh, we have kids that since they're little, they know they wanna be a doctor, they know they wanna be a lawyer, and guess what? Some of them actually do.
None of us wanted to be superintendents, though.
No, I didn't.
And again, it's one of those like teach yourself on the job, what your possibilities are.
That's right.
Right?
One of the things that I had um from my former school district is was um imagine the possibilities.
Hmm.
And it was for them, imagine the possibilities of what your life can be if you apply everything you learned to your future. That's the motivation, that's what schools are trying to do, that's what this process does, right? Is trying to trying to get the focus there, but I think what you're talking about very clearly is we're kind of stuck on this whole thing of how do we get the the general community to understand this is why we do it?
Yeah, that it's important, it's not about, you know, that there's kind of a sense sometimes that it's just mumbo jumbo or it's laziness or we don't expect as much, when indeed we expect so much more, but it's valued less.
And everyone's the expert because they went to school.
Right, well, I mean, we we laugh about it, we call it uh my GHD, which is the Google PhD. You know, like, I can go on, I can get a GHD
I like that, I'm just feeling that.
And I'll know everything about what it is that it took you twenty-five years to learn. You have no idea how amazing this entire, you know, like, that there are there are people out in this town who know exactly how to run facilities and academic education.
Yeah.
You know, like, they just know how to do budgeting for, you know, state projects. It's it's incredible, I mean, yeah. And and so there's this kind of loss of respect of the, you know, everybody's the expert now, but still.
Well, and and that's the thing is, um, I think education and what you're describing today is um insight on what we've learned about kids and what we've learned about educating them.
Hmm.
And this is what we do, this is what we've learned, and this is what we're doing purposely to actually motivate them to realize what their pathway is gonna be.
Based on research.
That's right.
And what we've learned about the brain in the last twenty years is so beyond what we've ever learned about before.
Right. So it's a convergence of the past and the new and reeducating what is necessary to become evolutionary. Because I don't think education is is not hasn't hasn't moved at the at the pace that we needed to stay up with what our kids newly need, right?
Yeah.
It's it's a, it's a challenge, it's a huge challenge. And it all goes back to the experience we had. I don't want my kids to go through schools that I went through, I really don't.
How many, how many ways can you possibly learn the American Revolution in how many grades? You know, like, I don't know, you guys ever had to, I went to five American school districts when I was a kid and every single one, I did not make it past the Civil War ever, right? Like, we just teach and teach and teach the same thing over and over again. I don't see that here, but that is but there are messages of it, you know, because that's just how we've structured education.
Yeah, it's one of the challenges. It's just strategic planning wise, what makes the most sense to 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 shift the tide, right?
Hmm. Right, and again, it comes to communication, which is.
It's huge.
And it needs a, it needs a professional and it needs to take.
Yeah.
It needs to allow our administrators to be educators and not firemen.
I hired my first commu- I was probably, I think I hired my communications director who I she's working with T L A now to do all, she's the one that does all of our publications, okay?
Hmm.
I hired her uh eight years ago, so I had a communications director.
You were ahead of the curve, Gary.
Ten years ago, what's that?
You were ahead of the curve.
No, but I had a big district.
Yeah.
I worked in schools, so.
And with a lot of different, yeah.
Yeah, so it's it's just one of those things that I can't be that. I mean, I was writing newsletters, taking my kids to basketball games, my wife would drive and I would write the Friday newsletter.
Yeah.
My wife should call on me, you wanna?
Yeah.
My wife, there must be something wrong, she called me twice in a row.
Oh, dear.
Let me see what's going on, I'm sorry.
I wish you were on my school committee, I would still be doing the job, this is great, so.
You know, I have a thousand good ideas and no minions. That is just, you know, like, we could figure out the world with our minions.
You know, it's frustrating, right?
Oh, hysterical.
So, um, everything all right?
Everything like good, can you stop at the store on the way home?
Like, what happened? Yes, yes, ma'am, I'll tie you away.
Just exactly, just say yes.
Yeah, definitely. I'm retired, she has to work, so guess what I do?
Everything she says.
Good man.
This is retirement? I don't think this is.
I'm not a retired. I've I've struck my son either, so. You know, you have that.
Awesome.
Well, you know, one of the things, and we say this to these to groups uh quite often, um, you will leave tonight and wish you said something.
Of course.
And then that's why the survey that we send out has a a number of of common spaces around some of the same exact things.
Hmm.
But you can get a little bit more in depth.
Yeah.
We've had surveys, I run all the surveys behind the scenes. And we've had parents write like dissertations and that.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it.
So, but it's important for the for the teams to actually read a qualifying statement, right? We need more communication. Well, okay, well, tell me where.
Right.
And what, for, you know, so, and we get pet parents, some parents, a- as you know, being at school committee, people wanna have a voice and hopefully this will will allow them to do that.
This is the opportunity.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, one of the things that that we've done kind of, it's positive is that we need a space, especially on the bigger issues, in which we'll put out kind of a a Google Doc where people will be able to give us their input
Yeah.
in a way that they feel like they can think about it, not have to keep it, not have to speak in public. When we make them, we make them public because I I firmly believe that, you know, if somebody makes public comments contributing to the decisions your elected officials are making, it should be out in the open.
Yep.
Um, and then it's kind of like, I'm just gonna put a little word here, put a little word there, right? Well, like, you know, like, I think we should all be open about that, but it allows people to think in a much more kind of uh holistic way, you know? And doesn't, uh, it it just makes it a lot easier. And and I, a lot of the time I find myself being able to kind of marinate those those thoughts a lot more easily in terms of making decisions than the three-minute stand-up public comment, which, you know, I try to give as much attention to, but but it had more time and I understand, yeah.
It's just different.
Yeah, you want to consider it.
It's that, it's that dipsticking, you know, you dipstick for understanding.
Yeah.
Yes, do you got, I mean, after after new policy comes out and people, you 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 know just what the COVID policies you got to pass, right? And people don't like it, don't like it, but you give them opportunity to express it, they appreciate it.
Yes, hundred percent.
And I think one of the reasons that, you know, again, when we changed the the logo, we gave people full voice.
A long ago, was that?
To say, uh, we did it in the middle of pandemic, cause we didn't have anything else to do. No, it was, you know.
You think everybody's mad enough anyway, but just throw, throw one more thing in there.
I, well, yeah. Uh, the big joke was that I.
Had to do it though, had to do it.
I hated the thing from the very beginning. I was like, why is there a a hypothermic blue Native American caricature on our school? I hate it. And everybody was like, oh my god, just stop, stop. Like, we know it's important, but not now, not now.
Not now, not now, not now.
And then, you know, God bless George Floyd.
Yeah.
He changed so much more where community members were coming to us and saying, we, this is not acceptable. And I I thank them for that, cause it helped move that conversation forward. There's a lot more conversation that has to happen with them. But we were also, you know, we were looking at, uh, there's another district that's uh attempting to kind of do that and has asked.
That might be one of the reasons why your DEI work has progressed a little bit.
A little bit.
Right, awareness, right? And those tough conversations bring up, you know, people out of the woodwork that have really strong opinions, not positive, negative or neutral.
Yeah.
But yet listen to them.
Yeah.
And that helps you to form that direction.
And it also helps people once they hear all of these opinions, then they think, um, you know, there were pe- people who hold on to their idea simply because it is their idea, it means something to them deeply, but when they hear a different perspective for real, in person, uh and they start to think, okay, well, why is this being so important? Why is this so important to them? I had a lot of people say, you know, I don't care one way or the other, but I couldn't figure out why I was holding on to it.
That's right.
You know, and okay, so that's a shift, right? Like, that's a a level of like looking at yourself and saying, okay, why why is this so important?
It's a great example for the students.
Yeah.
Great example to say, we're gonna take on a challenge and we're gonna stand by it, right? Under a difficult time.
Yeah.
Because it was happening around other things, right, that that pushback.
I just wanna go back, sorry, to the um, the, I was just thinking, it isn't just an awareness of, I mean, that's how I was starting the thinking of the awareness of how students learn. But I had a parent say to me the other day, like, why do teachers need prep time? So I also wonder if there's education around what the day of in the life of a teacher actually looks like. Because I do also feel that many community members don't fully understand what goes into being an effective and great teacher, right?
Right.
And I I think it's not just the prep time, it's like what they're doing in school and outside of school hours, they're not, you know, what do they do when they're not with your kid to help educate your kid?
Right.
Because there is a ton of time outside of when they're with your child that goes into furthering and helping and bettering their education.
And then that a lot of that is the differential um learning, that people don't understand happens in the classroom.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah.
Where every single kid, you know, if you spend any time kind of hanging out, and actually, if you get a chance to do this, I loved the days that I just uh, I would ask Jeff to go and I would, I would shadow a kid
Yeah.
for a full day through every.
I used to be, um, I was a principal, I used to be a stu- I used to be a student for a day.
And you were so much. Yeah.
And a student was a principal for the day who sold most, whatever the fundraiser was, everybody thought I did it to be cutesy, but wasn't what I did. I wanted to see what a day in a life of student was, I do their homework, you know, and I I wrote my own five oh four, so I had unlimited bathroom breaks, but I would, I would uh do all my classes.
You wrote, you wrote in chewing gum too, didn't you?
I, no, that wasn't in, I don't know, they got a few of it. Coffee, though, was a lot. Um, but I went to all the classes, I ate lunch, I did the homework and uh then I went to um, I did, I think, I can't remember, it might have been more what I did. I had the middle school teachers on each team, I said, I'll get your sub for the day and I want you to follow your, one of your kids' schedules and then I don't wanna know about a report back to your team on what your day was like, what was the work like? What was the homework load? Was it engaging? Was it interesting? Was it worksheets? And it it it's kind of a powerful experience a little bit day in the life of a student.
It's also, one of the things I found the most powerful was especially was following a kid around the high school and seeing what groups hung together, who talked to each other and who didn't. And it was one of those times where I learned that truly the children of color in our schools did not have the same social networks at all. Um, that, you know, like, that that was a whole different kind of experience that they were having. You know, like, you would go to art class, everybody would be working on a project, da 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 da. But there was unfortunately just one child of color and she was just having to do her own thing because she just wasn't in that same network in the same way that everybody else was. And it wasn't deliberate exclusion, it was what do what do your parents do with each other? Who's going to the cake with each other? Who's doing this, who's doing that? And it didn't, it wasn't translating to that, right? The social relationships that happen outside of school were also parroted inside of school. And that was, that was one of the most profound things, you know, that I was watching all day. In each grade that I I went through, and each kid wasn't just a one-day thing. It was really.
Anything else to make the list?
Well, I mean, I think we fixed it, right?
Oh, yeah, it's all done, it's all set.
Five years.
It'll be better tomorrow.
Bing, bang, boom. I mean, I think that we've, we've really progressed with our original strategic plan. And and that I've always seen this as like building on the
Building on, yes.
the best of what we
Yeah.
have achieved and what we really need to work on.
Yeah. A lot of the successes that you've seen over time um are purposeful. Chris is gonna actually take that and expand on some of that.
Super. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Excellent, excellent job.
Close your meeting.
Oh, yes, we do. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
removed.
remove Jeff's second, Michelle. Michelle, roll call.
Uh, Jessica Riley.
Michelle Kirkley. And then I have Shakira. Um, thank you.